Let's get started and I will call the meeting to order. December 9, 2020, land use public hearing. ZDO 273. Before we begin, I'd like to invite you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today, we are considering ZDO 273, a proposed legislative text amendment to Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance that would specifically authorize short-term rentals in legal dwellings and guest houses. The hearing ZDO 273 will proceed as following. We'll first hear a presentation from our principal planner, Martha Fritzi. Next, I'll open the hearing for public testimony, beginning with the public officials, who will have at least five minutes each. Then, the representatives from recognized community planning organizations and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, others wishing to testify will have up to three minutes each. The board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time to make a decision at a later date. Assisting us in the hearing today is our clerk, Christina Tewilliger, Planning Director Jennifer Hughes, Planning Principal Planner Martha Fritzi in the Planning and Zoning Division, and Associate County Counsel Nate Boderman. Assisting us with our broadcast and webcast are Garrett Teague, and Rich Marvin, and Kevin Galusha. Today, we are holding the land use hearing virtually. If you'd like to join us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public testimony, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. The Zoom link and instructions to participate via Zoom are located at You will have the option of providing your comments to us during this public comment portion of the meeting. Be sure to include your name and the area from which you live. With that, we'll now hear from Martha Fritzi.
Good morning. Share screen. There we go. So, trying to start my slideshow here. There we go. All right. Yes, Martha Fritzi, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Division. And we are here to talk about short-term rentals, specifically about the zoning development code amendments that are proposed under ZDO 273. And those amendments are to clarify where short-term rentals are allowed, and that would be in most legal dwellings and in guest houses. And remember, short-term rental is a dwelling unit or a portion of that unit that is rented for a period of up to 30 consecutive nights. And so, why are we here again? We've been having a lot of conversations about short-term rentals. And in fact, on November 25th, the board, you all adopted the Short-Term Rental Registration and Regulation Program into the county code. But we are here because the zoning and development ordinance does not specifically allow short-term rentals in any homes. It's silent about short-term rentals. And so, from a zoning perspective, that now creates a conflict with this registration program that's in the county code. And quite frankly, our zoning code needs some clarity on if and where short-term rentals are allowed. Our ZDO specifically actually prohibits the use of a guest house as any source of rental income. And so, that would need to be changed to support the short-term rental program adopted into the county code. And so, we have seen this slide a number of times. I will not spend a lot of time on it, but just a quick reminder. There's really three prongs to this long-short-term rental conversation that we have had. We are nearing the tail end of it. There's three different pieces that need to go through an adoption process. The first piece, as I mentioned, was adopted. It's Section 810 in the county code, which contains the Short-Term Rental Registration Program, rules and regulations specific to short-term rentals. The piece that we're talking about today is number two on this list, the zoning code amendments, enabling amendments to eliminate conflicts between the code and the ZDO and specifically allow or be clear where short-term rentals are allowed. And those changes are to two sections in the zoning code, which I'll talk about a little bit more in just a minute. And then, the third and final piece to fully implement the short-term rental program would be the adoption of fees and fines, which also would be a county code amendment. And that is going to happen at some point next year when the board is going through the regular budgetary process. And again, this is where we are today. We're in number two at your public hearing related to the ZDO amendments. The Planning Commission has already held their public hearing and voted seven to one to recommend approval of the zoning code amendments. So, let's talk about the zoning code amendments that are proposed. I said it was two sections. It's Amendment Section 202, under definitions. There is a proposal to amend the definition of dwelling unit a little bit to make it very clear that the rental on a short-term basis is allowed in a dwelling unit. In other words, a dwelling unit is a dwelling unit. Whether or not someone is the owner's living in it, whether or not a renter is living in it for a long period of time or a short period of time, it's just a dwelling in it. And then, Section 833 is specific to guest houses. And guest houses are not allowed in all locations. Guest houses are allowed at certain areas, and they need to meet certain specific criteria in terms of size and location and things like that. Currently, there is also a specific prohibition on using a guest house as a source of rental income. The proposal would change that to allow it to be used as a rental on a short-term basis. In both cases, it should be noted that there is language added to the ZDO that makes it clear that if it's being used as a short-term rental, there is still a maximum occupancy of 15 that is currently the maximum for a family in a dwelling unit. And we just wanted to be clear that that is still the case with the short-term rental. And again, that's reiterated in the county code amendments that you just recently made, but we also wanted to be clear in the zoning code about that. And so, these are legislative amendments to our zoning code. They're subject to all the relevant goals and policies and the statewide planning goals and Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan and the County Comprehensive Plan and in our ZDO. And staff has found that all the relevant goals and policies are met. They are discussed in some detail in the Planning Commission's staff report that was included in your packet. Just generally, all of our comprehensive plan, Goals and Goal 10 are met because we are simply clarifying that rental use of a dwelling unit is allowed. Nothing in Goal 10 or our comprehensive plan seeks to regulate whether or not units, housing units are owned or rented. They are about being able to provide theoretical housing stock sufficient to meet all the goals and needs of the county's citizens. And nothing in there really speaks to ownership or rental of a dwelling unit. Because there is no increase in the maximum number of occupants, Goal 12, which is transportation, would continue to be met because at the time of the development of the house, it's assumed that all of the relevant transportation systems and other infrastructure systems are sufficient to meet the needs of that dwelling. And the remaining applicable relevant goals and policies really have to do with procedures and all of the appropriate procedures in terms of notification and opportunities for public participation have been followed in this case. So, on November 23rd, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to discuss these ZDO amendments. There were two people there that testified. There were no significant issues raised at that hearing that directly rated related to the ZDO amendments. There was a lot of discussion. And actually, most of the testimony really had to do with some of the regulations that are housed in the Short-Term Rental Program in the county code. But it should be noted that this hearing happened before we knew whether or not those county code amendments were going to be adopted. And so, the Planning Commission did spend some time discussing and considering whether they would want to recommend approval of these zoning code amendments regardless of whether or not that county code amendment was approved, was adopted. Ultimately, they voted seven to one to recommend approval regardless of whether or not the county code amendments were adopted. Of course, two days later, they were adopted. And so, that's currently the status. The Planning Commission and staff found that generally that the proposed amendments are necessary to implement the short-term rental program that's recently adopted, but also that they're needed to provide certainty, both to current and to future property owners who want to invest in properties and to provide certainty that somewhere down the road, there's not going to be some sort of code enforcement action taken against them simply because of the use of their property because it's unclear right now in our zoning code. And I think through the course of this project, we've heard a lot of public comments and opinions about what to do about short-term rentals. But I think generally, the overall underlying feeling was that the public does support allowing short-term rentals. And so, because of those things, the Planning Commission did recommend that the ZDO amendments be approved regardless of what happened with the short-term rental program in the county code. So, between the Planning Commission hearing and your hearing today, staff did make a few minor edits to the drafts. They're not anything substantive. We had some other staff planners take a look at it because we're so close to it and have spent so much time. And we know what we wanted it to say. And we asked a couple of others to review it and asked them what we really were saying. And as a result, we made a few tweaks to the language, but it's not anything substantive between what the Planning Commission saw and what you see now. And staff also recommends approval of ZDO 273 as currently drafted and included in the packet for today's meeting. And that's it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Stop sharing, too.
Does anyone have any questions? Paul?
Thank you, Martha. Nice presentation. I intend on supporting this today. I wish we would have done this first. That's not a fault of staff or anyone. But I'm kind of wondering, there's 376 cities in Oregon, and there's 36 counties for a total of 412. And I don't imagine maybe that all of them have streamlined them, all of the short-term rental approaches or ordinances or code or whatnot. So, what, not just with this amendment, which again, I support, but with the registration and regulation elements that came before us a couple of weeks ago, what, who do we align with the closest that's doing really on this effort? That's really the closest in alignment to what we're doing?
Well, it's a complicated question. And I can maybe get close. Early on in the project, we had staff who spent a lot of time researching what other jurisdictions do, and particularly jurisdictions in Oregon. And as we started moving through this process, we tried to pull pieces from other jurisdictions, regulations, or programs that we were told worked well. And so, in terms of the actual structure between the county code and the ZDO and where the program is housed, we modeled that largely after at least one other county, Clackamas County, which has it structured similarly. I believe there are a few other counties that do. There's a lot of counties that don't regulate it, honestly. In terms of the particular regulations inside the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary, that was similar to what Lake Oswego is doing. And those are the two that sort of jumped to my mind right now. I think it's a little bit of a mix and match of some of the other jurisdictions. I don't feel like it was particularly groundbreaking, anything that we put in there. We tried to really use what we knew from other jurisdictions that was working for them.
Thank you for that response. Yeah, just again, you know, you guys, the staff, you have all done a great job under some difficult discussions and conditions. And I'm hoping that we can try to get this in a place going forward that is, turns out to be a good product, in my opinion. I don't think we're quite there yet, but with this piece, I think you've done an outstanding job, and I'm willing to support it as it sits.
Great. Great. Did you want to comment on that or no? I just want to say, I think you guys have done a good job. It's been a long time coming. We've got a lot of discussions. There's only one thing you said that I would love this to get out of the vocabulary of employees, and that is citizen versus resident. And so, it's provide housing opportunities for residents rather than citizen. And that, of course, is clear in the ordinance. It does not say citizen. I just wanted to state that. All right. So, with that, if there's no more questions, I'll move on to opening the public hearing. We will now open the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any public officials who wish to testify? I think what we'll do is we'll just, because we're online, we'll just raise your hand if you'd like to testify, and we'll determine whether you're a public official or not, or represent CPO. I see we have one. Christina?
I have a Dennis Tilka, and I'm hoping I say your name correctly. I'm sorry if I don't. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, and I guess we'll determine whether you have five or three minutes.
Hello. My name is Dennis Tilka. I've been testifying on this on several occasions. My biggest concern is there's so many unknowns of what's going to happen when you allow this. Before, it was a prohibitive use because it wasn't specifically listed. And I think you're opening Pandora's Box, and you have no way to control it once it happens. I'd rather have you done this as a conditional use and see what happens. And you have some control over it because conditional uses are the specific rules for everything about it. And you're just opening it. It's another thing is I think you should have done it as a primary use or a conditional use. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump. But I'm familiar with land use regulations. And if I read the regulations, I would still assume short-term rentals are prohibitive because it's not specifically listed. You would have to go through each word and then go back to your glossary and look for definitions to find out it is allowable use. So, I think it was kind of a back way of doing it. Another thing I'm concerned about is your bed and breakfast home stay. It's going to nullify that. I think it's ZDO 832. 832 is a listed conditional use in my zoning district. And in order to have that use, you would have to pay almost $4,000 and go through a conditional use to get that. And who in their right mind would ever do that when they could just say, it's not a bed and breakfast, it's just the short-term rentals? And it would fall right within those regulations. So, you basically just wiped out one of your zoning ordinances. I mean, your zoning ordinances. So, if you're going to do this, I would probably amend that to get rid of that. Because why would you need it? Because no one's going to pay $4,000 when they already have a way of back doing it by just saying it's a short-term rental. Another thing is, I think this is more of a commercial use. And if you look at your zoning ordinances, where they talk about zoning ordinance residential and zoning ordinance commercial, you can see a distinct difference between the two. And in fact, you're taxing it as a commercial use because you're taxing it for the tourist dollars. So, I'm not sure what to do at this point. I know you're going to amend it. I mean, you're going to adopt it. But I'd hope that there's some way you can go back and look at it and hope to regulate it a different way. One of my biggest concerns is where I live, we are relatively small lots. And we are in septic tanks and wells. And when they build a house, they build a house how many bedrooms it has. Now, they don't build it on how many sleeping areas they have. They build it on how many bedrooms they have. There's a difference. I don't know why you chose sleeping areas instead of bedrooms. But it's based on you want so much of a flow within a day. And what you're going to do is you're going to take a two-bedroom house and pack four more people in there besides what sleeps in the bedrooms.
Sorry to interrupt you, Dennis. We have reached our three-minute time limit.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Bernard, you're on mute.
Thank you, Dennis, for your comments. But the truth is, we already have short-term rentals all over the county. And right now, they're not managed at all. So, this will at least give us the ability to register so we know where they are. And the previous code amendments allow some enforcement and frankly, provide some safety for people who are renting short-term rentals that right now, we don't regulate. So, hopefully, this will improve some of those. And of course, they can go back in the future and make some amendments to the zoning code to address concerns that happen, occur during this time period. And you're probably right, the bed and breakfast part, I would probably look at. All right. Thank you. Anybody else like to testify, or do we have any emails?
I do have one email to read. I'll go ahead and do that, and if anybody raises their hand, we can move on back to them. So, this email is, let's see. It's from Andrew Mulkey from 1,000 Friends of Oregon. And it's saying, please accept my following testimony on behalf of 1,000 Friends of Oregon for the short-term rental proposal currently before the Board of Commissioners. Please include me in any subsequent notice for hearings and notice of decision related to this proposal. Thank you. I'm writing to express concern that the proposed changes violate ORS 215.448, Oregon's Home Occupation Statute, which includes limits on non-resource uses on farm and forest lands. Excuse me. The proposal would allow short-term rentals in unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and states that the short-term rental chapter applies within, in the incorporated areas of Clackamas County. If the area includes land designated in zone for farms and forest use, then the proposed changes violates ORS 215.448 and creates a conflict with the comprehensive plans and statewide planning goal protections for farm and forest lands. ORS 215.448 only allows non-resource-related businesses uses to the extent they are operated by a resident or employee of the property. The confusion stems from the fact that the proposed short-term rental chapter uses the term unincorporated areas, which the county's zoning and development ordinance does not define. Instead, the county zoning and development ordinance defines the term unincorporated community. 1,000 Friends asks that the county amend the proposal for clarity and to limit the short-term rental provisions to unincorporated communities only. Even then, the county must demonstrate compliance with Goals 10 and 14. The county must make it clear that it is proposed amendments to the defined definitions of guest house and dwelling unit do not provide a loophole that would allow short-term rentals within the county's natural resource districts that provide farm and forest lands. A simple statement that short-term rentals are not allowed within EFU, TBR, or AG/F zones would eliminate any uncertainty. And it looks like we have one person that has their hand raised. So, I will bring over Murph. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Murph.
Morning, Murph.
As you know, I've been involved in this quite a bit. There is one issue I want to bring up that we're not, the county's not requiring any change in homeowner's insurance. And I have brought this up before with Martha and Jennifer, that this is something we should at least put out that if you're going into this business, you should check with your insurance company that you are covered. You're conducting a business within your home that may not be covered under your homeowner's insurance. My family personally had an issue in central Oregon with a short-term rental they had, and they had an accident. Give a brief description. They received notice two months after they had rented to a wedding party that someone had fallen down the stairs and they were being sued. At that time, they found out they did not have enough coverage. They only had homeowner's insurance, not a commercial insurance. This is still hanging in the air. And they're living with this on their shoulders. I would just like to bring this out that in this meeting, that it's, I think this is something that should be brought forward when someone's applying, that they should check on their homeowner's insurance. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's something that might be in the previously adopted thing is a requirement, or at least something that suggests that people look at their liability insurance. I personally, we have one at the coast, and we have, what's that insurance called where you personally, I can't think of what it's called. You know, like a million-dollar coverage for things that aren't in your homeowner's insurance.
Umbrella.
What'd you say?
Umbrella.
Yeah, umbrella policy. Anyway, Sonya?
So, Martha, I'm just wondering with the list of things that the Airbnb or short-term rental applicant, couldn't that be listed on there to, you know, just to make it a red flag that they need to look at that and make sure that they have coverage? That's a real bummer when you don't have homeowner's coverage for something, and then you have to, you get sued and you pay personally.
Nate may be able to answer that better than me. I don't have it open in front of me. Chair Bernard's correct. That's something that is in the county code section that was recently adopted. And one of the application's submittal requirements is a demonstration or proof of insurance. I don't know what the specific language is in there, but there's something in there intended to get to that, I believe.
Yeah, I don't think we required a particular type of insurance or a level of insurance. And you know, there's certainly a difference between regulating a minimum amount and simply advising whether that's, you know, appropriate for an individual to obtain. So, we could go either way with that, I think. I don't have the regulation up in front of me either, but as far as our county code goes, I don't recall specifically mandating a particular type of insurance.
Okay, that's great. I think just issue spotting it and having it be on when the applicant looks at it, just to go, oh, yeah, I shouldn't even think about this, is really smart. It's probably more a matter of consumer education about what they need to do. But yeah, that's good. That's great. I'm glad to know that that is listed. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Any additional emails or people who would like to testify?
Any additional emails? And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right. With that, I'll close the public portion of today's hearing and begin deliberation. Is there anybody, anything we'd like to deliberate, or would we want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZDO dash two seven three as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ZDO two seven three, two seven three as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, I appreciate all the comments, both written and oral today. I think that there are some things that have been pointed out that I think are actually quite ubiquitous across the state, and that is that there are a number of conflicts in land use laws, and I think in goals, in state planning goals. I, I am not comfortable frankly with the fact that this is a commercialization of, you know, frankly, residential areas. But I think HB two thousand and one kind of encouraged that as well. And I think that a lot of our goals just aren't working. I think the more you regulate, the more problems you create. And a great example of that is our urban growth boundary. Unfortunately, if you look at the surrounding rural cities outside the UGB, they're either maxed out, or their, their, their growth that they are seeing is, is just, it's just amazing how many people are moving out of the area, migrating out of the area, but still working in the Portland metro area, exacerbating our transportation challenges, exacerbating our air quality challenges, frankly, and, and again, not, not achieving really what the goal was in the first place of the urban growth boundary. So, and frankly, it's in that, because of that, it's resulted in extremely high property values with the inner growth boundary. It's exacerbated the homeless situation and poverty. So are there problems and conflicts? Absolutely. But I, you know, too many to list, and I'd certainly be interested to know whether it's the thirty-six counties or the three hundred and seventy-six cities, which, how are we handling it? If, if there's any state land use challenges in the future going forward, how, how or where are they going to be targeted? So we'll just watch how this plays out. That's all I have. Thank you.
And any further discussion? Let me see. With that, I'll turn it over to Christina for a poll.
Hi, Commissioner Fisher.
Hi.
Commissioner Humbertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Your mic, Martha.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. And let me see. I guess with that, that's the end of our hearing today. Appreciate, yes, Nate? Is there another page?
Yeah, the paragraph at the end. Go ahead and direct staff to draft an ordinance, because we're going to have this at your last business meeting for approval next week.
Okay. So you said it, go ahead and I'll ask staff to draft a proposal for December seventeenth. Is that, will that be a hearing or just a?
It's a, it'll be a discussion item, no, no public testimony.
Okay, great. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I mean, thank you all very much, and we'll see you, some of you in a few minutes. Thanks.